Good evening, how are you today?
I'm good. I'm glad to see you. I'm glad to see you. You look like a young man. You're so handsome.
You're so beautiful. You're so beautiful.
You're so beautiful. I'm so happy to see you.
I don't know what to say. I don't know what to say.
You're beautiful. I love you. I love you. Thank you.
You're so beautiful. Well, I know.
Why are you always... This is the only thing that... This is the only thing that... Why are you always...
Normal.
I love you. I love you. Thank you, Mr. Sariah. I thought I was here. Ah, that's... I thought I was here. I'm... Oh my God, I'm so happy to see you. I love you. I love you.
Go on. He's laughing.
For Subaduk, Section 15H rule for the rules of the House of Representatives, the Speaker, after confering with the Deputy Speakers, has designated the Honorable Victoria Isabel Noel as today's Presiding Officer.
Session is called to order.
Everybody's requested to rise for the singing of the national anthem.
Session is called to order.
(Singing) "Bayang magiliw, peras ang silangan. Alang ng kuso sa tiyapik moy buhay. Lupang hiniram, buyan ka ng magiting. Sa manlulupi kita pasisitil. Sa lalat at pundok sa Cebuyan. Sa langit ng papa, may nilang ang pulahan. Awin sa paglayang nilamahan. Ang isap ng watawan moy kamumpay naratingin. Ang pituweng na paraw niya may langpapay magtingin. Lupan ang maraw ng paraw kami pangsekta. Buoy ay lami sa dito. Aming ligaya napak may amapin. Ang lalat ay naktan sayo."
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the calling of the role.
There being no objection, is there any objection? There being none. Um, calling of the role is deferred.
Madam Speaker, I move that we defer the approval of the journal.
Uh, any objection? There being none. Um, approval of the journal is deferred.
Yes.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions in first reading, as well as communications and committee reports. Sumo, Mister Speaker.
Secretary General is directed.
Reference of Business, Bills and First Reading, House Bill 5590, Reforming the Budget Process, Representative Snugrales.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 5591, Requiring mandatory registration of all those who purchase and/or use of prepaid subscriber SIM cards, Representative Tabutin.
To the Committee on Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 5592, Increasing the Quarters Allowance of Officers and enlisted Personnel, Representative Espino.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 5593, Mandating the Conduct of Fire, Earthquake, and Other Hazardous Phenomena Drills, Representative Vargas.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 5594, Establishing the Philippine Social Welfare and Benefit System, Representative Kua.
To the Committee on Social Services.
House Bill 5595, Providing for the Special Protection of Child Passengers, Representative Sarmiento and Bilate.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 5596, Providing for the Construction of a Bypass Highway Road in Lingayang Pangasinan, Representative Batawin.
To the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 5597, Declaring the Third District Kapalawan as a Mining Free Zone, Representative Acosta.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 5598, Establishing a National High School in Kayapan, Nueva Biscaya, Representative Juarezma.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 5599, Providing an Increase and an Automatic Adjustment Mechanism in the Personal Economic Leave Allowance, Representative Salo.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 5600, Institutionalizing the Philippine Qualifications Framework, Representative Hofer.
To the Committee on Higher Education and Technical Education.
House Bill 5601, Converting the Cabasalan Institute of Technology, Representative Hofer.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 555602, Renewing for another 25 years the franchise granted to Bim Contu Broadcasting Corporation, Representative Mendoza.
To the Committee on Legislative Franchises.
House Bill 5603, Accelerating Universal Access to Tertiary Education, Representative Villapuarte.
To the Committee on Higher Education, Technical Education.
House Bill 5604, Granting Discount Benefits to All Sole Parents, Representative Castelo.
To the Committee on Revision of Laws.
Resolution, South Solution 981, Directing the National Power Corporation to immediately put into commercial operation the modular gen sets installed in Cebuyan and Roblon Islands, Representative Uy Barreta.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Solution 982, Directing the D O T R, the Civil Aviation Authority, to include and declare the Depolok City Airport San Banco del Norte as one of the alternate international airports, Representative Balosos.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Solution 980, Urging the D O H to strictly implement Republic Act 7600, Representative Juarezma.
To the Committee on Health.
House Solution 984, Urging the House to invite for discussion PNP Region 7 and PNP Director General relative to the rapid proliferation of illegal gambling activities, Representative Tevez.
The Committee on Rules.
House Solution 985, Urging the House to invite for discussion the matter concerning the continued requirement by the LTO Region 7 of drug test results, Representative Tevez.
The Committee on Rules.
House Solution 986, Commanding the 2016 Bartap Nature Karen May Calum, Representatives Cortez, Calderon, Gulya, several others.
Committee on Rules.
Committee Report. Report number 230 to 234, and House Bill Number 5638 to 5641 and 3710.
Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for a one-minute suspension.
Session suspended.
Yes, sir.
Session resume.
Mister Speaker, we have in the plenary hall the guests of the Honorable Angelina Head and Tan. They are the Federation of Deportive Workers, Municipal Social Welfare Development Office Staff, and Female Sanggurembayan Members, headed by Vice Mayor Sinayda Biranga from Atimonan, Quezon.
Your presence is acknowledged. Welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mister Speaker, I move for one-minute suspension.
Session suspended. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we proceed with additional reference of business and request the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions in first readings, as well as communications and committee reports.
Secretary General.
Additional Reference of Business, Committee Reports, Report Number 235 and House Bill Number 5643.
To the Committee on Rules.
Report Number 236 and House Bill Number 5646.
Committee on Rules.
Report Number 237, House Bill Number 5647.
Committee on Rules.
Report Number 238 on House Bill Number 5648.
Committee on Rules.
Mister Speaker, I move for one-minute suspension.
Session suspended.
Session resumed.
Mr. Speaker, in accordance with the rules governing increase in aid of legislation, I move that we refer the following House Resolutions to the appropriate committees. House Resolution 941 to the Committee on Natural Resources. House Resolution 946 to the Committee on Government, Enterprises and Privatization. House Resolution 947 to the Committee on Housing and Urban Development. House Resolution 948 to the Committee on Human Rights. House Resolution 951 to the Committee on Agriculture and Food. House Resolution 953 to the Committee on Agrarian Reform. House Resolution 954 to the Committee on Public Order and Safety. House Resolution 955 to the Committee on Human Rights. House Resolution 956 to the Committee on Tourism. House Resolution 957 to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. House Resolution 958 to the Committee on Games and Amusements. House Resolution 960 to the Committee on Human Rights. House Resolution 961 to the Committee on Energy. And House Resolution 963 to the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation. To move, Mr. Speaker.
Any objection in the aforementioned referral? Chair Heshnan, the motion is carried.
I move for one-minute suspension, Mr. Speaker.
One-minute suspension.
Do you want more?
I just want to move it.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
Secretary General directed to call the roll. Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abad. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abueg. Acharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Ajong. Advinkula. Agarau. Agabao. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alkala. Alihano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Argones. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensah. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batokabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Villisiano. Belmonte Jose Cristoper. Belmonte Ricardo. Binites. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Bilyones. Biron. Bulilia. Bundok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Maravida. Brosas. Bulut Bigtan. Kagas. Calderon. Calix Rubiano. Caminero. Campos. Canama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Federini. Katamco. Caetano. Celeste. Seravica. Seriles. Chaves. Chupeco. Co. Juango. Juliantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Osalan. Crisologo. Cuah. Cuaresma. Cueva. Delipe. Dalog. Dasa. Jesus. De Venesia. De Vera. De Pensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. Del Osomontalia. Dimoporo Abdullah. Dimoporo Khalid. Duavit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Erigel. Hermita Boyen. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrelia. Yusebio. Evardonne. Farias. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Ferial. Florrendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. Garcia Guendolin. Garcia Jose. Garcia Albano. Garin Richard. Garin Sharon. Gasataya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Go Mark. Gomez. Gonzaga. Gonzalez Alexandria. Gonzalez Arroyodong. Gonzalez Fernando. Goreseta. Gulyas. Hernandez. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusos. Javier. Co. Congun. Labad Labad. Laxon. Lagman. Lanete. Logan. Lasatin. Lia Chon. Li. Limcaichong. Lubrigat. Lopez Benur. Lopez Carlo. Lopez Manuel. Loyola. Makapakalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Makudadatos Huarto. Makudadatos Ajit. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marquez. Martinez. Matugas. Millana. Mending. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirasol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nugralis Jerigo. Nugralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañan. Gominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Conotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primisia Sagabas. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Ropapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Máximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque Harry. Roque Helio. Sactalan. Sagar Maria. Sahani. Salceda. Salimbagon. Salo. Salón. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Rehto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Sabiliano. Semah. Xiao. Silberio. Singson. Suansing Estrelita. Suansing Buraso. Suárez. Si Albarado. Tambunting. Tananjulina. Tanmilagrosa. Tanshedi. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Talentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Turabinataman. Ti. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Barreta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Velasco. Velasco Cadera. Veloso. Bergara. Villapuerte. Villanueva. Villara Suárez. Villarica. Villarin. Vilago. Yap Arthur. Yap Meléxio. Yap Victor. Yu. Semoramar Garnén. Semoronaldo. Sarate. Subiri.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that one hundred ninety-five members responded to the call.
With one hundred ninety-five members in attendance, the Chair declares. Corrom.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 556, as contained in Committee Report Number 220, submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. And request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill without prejudice to the insertion into the records should the text draw. So move, Mr. Speaker.
House Bill Number 5576. An Act Establishing a Career Guidance and Counseling Program for All Secondary Schools and Propiting Funds Therefore.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, the Honorable Ramon Durano, be recognized to begin with his sponsorship.
Congressman Durano is here, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Good afternoon, my esteemed colleagues. Allow me to submit to this August Chamber, the recommendations of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, on the establishment of career guidance and counseling program for all secondary schools, through Committee Report Number 220 on House Bill Number 5576, in substitution of House Bills Number 1890 and 2867. Republic Act Number 10533, otherwise known as the Enhanced Basic Education Act of 2013, provides for the necessary preparation for various career tracks and options for students in senior high school. In consideration of the provision of the law, particularly Section 9, on career guidance and advocacy, this legislative proposal will support and address the requirements of Republic Act 10533. This bill aims to provide proper direction and guidance to secondary school students in pursuing subsequent tertiary education, to enable them to make educated career decisions and expose them to relevant labor market, thereby ensuring that the human resource generated by the tertiary education meets the requirements of the government, industry, and the economy. The objective of the bill is to have an educational system that is responsive to the needs of national development, which is achieved through career guidance and counseling at the secondary level, where through a secondary school career guidance and counseling program, students, especially the graduating, are given the capability to make decisions on what track to pursue, whether in education or in skills development. Secondary students should be guided on how to proceed from high school based on their inherent capacity and skills, job opportunity and accessible tertiary education, or technical education skills development programs. The ultimate goal of the bill is the generation of a human resource, which is in line with the potentials of the economy and the needs of the government, starting at the secondary education level. Your honors, this bill was passed by the House in the 16th Congress. I humbly submit for your consideration the approval of House Bill Number 5576, an Act Establishing a Career Guidance and Counseling Program for all secondary schools and appropriating funds therefore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation and debate.
There's a motion to open the period of debate. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, the Honorable Durano may move that the period of interpolation and debate be terminated.
No objection, the motion is carried, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
So motion to open the period of amendments. No objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
No objection, the motion is carried, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 5576. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There's a motion for the voting. Motion is carried. Those in favor say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business, we also have House Bill Number 557, as contained in Committee Report 221, submitted by the Committee on Basic Education and Culture. Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider the same and request the Secretary General to read the title of the bill without prejudice to the insertion into the records of the text draw.
Secretary General, the title please.
House Bill Number 5577, An Act Mandating the Conservation of Gabaldón School Buildings Nationwide, Providing Penalties for Violations Propiting Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Ramon Durano, the Chairman of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, is here, and we are requesting on moving that the explanatory note be adapted as his sponsorship speech.
Mr. Speaker, Durano is hereby recognized. Would you wish your speech to be inserted into the records?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I submit that the explanatory note of House Bill 5577 be used as my sponsorship.
Let this explanatory speech be inserted into the records, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation and debate.
There's a motion to open the period of interpolation and debate. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, the Honorable Durano, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
There is a motion, hearing no objections, the motion is carried, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Motion to open the period of amendments. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
There's a motion, objection. Motion is carried, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 557.
We now go to voting, those in favor say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, we also have, under the calendar of business for the day, House Bill Number 5633, as contained in Committee Report 227, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. May I request, Mr. Chairman, that the Secretary be directed to read the title of the bill without prejudice to the insertion into the records of the text draw.
Secretary General, please read the title.
House Bill Number 5633. An Act Promoting Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education by Providing for Free Tuition and Other School Fees in State Universities and Cal by Providing for Free Tuition and Other School Fees in State Universities and Colleges and State-run Technical Vocational Institutions, Strengthening the Unified Student Financial Assistance System for Tertiary Education and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Mister Speaker, the Honorable Anne Hofer, the Chairman of the Committee on Higher and Technical Education, is here, I move that she be recognized to begin her sponsorship speech.
Representative Anne Hofer is recognized, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Mister Speaker, colleagues and guests. The Universal Access to Quality Tertiary Education Bill is a consolidation of fifty-nine bills submitted to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. This measure aims to make tertiary, meaning both college and technical vocational education, more inclusive and more accessible. An educated citizenry makes for economic productivity, which engenders individual prosperity. Education lifts one out of poverty, a condition which calls to mind the Greek philosopher Aristotle, who wrote, "Poverty is the parent of crime." For his part, Greek philosopher Plato observed, "The direction in which education starts a man will determine his future in life." This consolidated bill will determine for our youth a bright future, and the higher their education, the brighter their future. The statistics bear this out significantly. A 2014 report by the Philippine Institute of Development Studies, or PIDS, found that college graduates has a median daily earnings that is one hundred sixteen percent higher than those of high school graduates, who in turn get twenty-six percent higher daily wage rates than elementary graduates. Students with college units have a twenty-seven percent higher wage rate over those with a secondary education. State subsidy for tertiary education is eighty-four billion or two point five percent of the entire national budget for 2017, or just point six percent, less than one percent, of our country's GDP for 2016. This however, has proven inadequate because of a rapidly growing population needing higher education. Thus, with each year, fewer high school graduates go on to college because they cannot afford it. The findings of CHED are that two out of five high school graduates, or forty percent of them, do not go to college because of high tuition fees and miscellaneous expenses. Similarly, a 2011 National Center for Education Statistics Reports showed that only three out of five college students graduate within six years. Most dropouts leave college after their freshman year due mainly to the rising cost of education. More recently, in the 2016 Labor Force Survey of the forty point nine million employed individuals in the country, only five point nine million, or fourteen percent, of the total employed individuals have completed college degrees. Honorable members of this August body, this landmark legislation has noteworthy features that are truly responsive to the needs of our constituents. First, this bill allows the country's poorest of the poor to have access to the once elusive tertiary education. Students will not only enjoy free tuition, but those who are financially disadvantaged will now also have access to tertiary education subsidy, which will be set up to help them defray the other costs of pursuing their studies. Second, this measure also creates a loan program for those who belong to families that fall under the first-to-aid income decile as determined by the Philippine Statistics Authority. Thus, the urgency of government supporting our students throughout their tertiary education serves to build a stronger, better-educated nation. Thus, the urgency of this consolidated bill, co-authored by fifty-nine legislators, including this lawmaker, fifty-nine legislators introduced their own versions of this education bill, which now has over eighty-five members, uh, co-authors, all with one noble aim, to make tertiary education more accessible, particularly to the poor and the powerless, including the struggling middle class, who comprise eighty percent of our country's population. You have the power, honorable members, to lift them out of the mire of poverty and elevate their economic status significantly through the approval of this bill. I plead with you to do so for a brighter destiny for the next generation and for a shining future for our beloved nation. Thank you, Mister Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation and debate.
So motion. No objection, the motion is carried.
There being no member who wishes to interpolate, the Honorable Hofer, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
No objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, there being no committee amendments nor individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
There's objection to the motion, motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 5633.
Second reading voting. Those in favor say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it, congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, we also have House Bill Number 5648, as contained in Committee Report 238, submitted by the Committee on Transportation. Mister Speaker, I move that we require... I move that we consider this House bill and that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill without prejudice to the insertion into the records of the text draw.
Secretary General.
House Bill Number 5648, An Act Rationalizing and Strengthening the Policy Regarding Driver's License Providing for a Five-Year Validity and Penalizing Acts in Violation of Its Insurance and Application.
Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, the Honorable Chairman of the Committee on Transportation, the Honorable Cesar Sarmiento is here, and we may request that the explanatory note be adapted as his sponsorship speech. So move, Mister Speaker.
The sponsorship speech is hereby inserted into the record. The Chair recognizes now the Honorable Cesar Sarmiento.
Uh, thank you. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. House Bill 5648 is the substitute bill on the various bills relating to the extension of LTO license validity from three years to five years. Extending the validity of the driver's license cards means there will be a reduction of transactions cost for the people. Extending the validity of licenses means savings in money, time, and other resources. There is however, another side to extending the validity of the driver's licenses. Extending the validity exposes us to the risk of allowing persons who do not have the skills, knowledge, and the proper frame of mind of a responsible driver to ply our roads. Extending the validity of the driver's licenses without properly screening the holders thereof can therefore lead to road accidents and the loss of lives. This is what this Committee on Transportation has been saying from day one. We have to determine the true purpose of the agency involved. To the uninitiated, the role of the LTO is simply to issue drivers' licenses and just that. Anything that would help speed up the process of issuing drivers' licenses or anything that will extend the validity of such is therefore to be deemed a win. However, as I have espoused since the 16th Congress, LTO is not there to merely issue drivers' licenses. It is there to ensure that the driver's licenses are issued only to deserving applicants, to those who have the skills, knowledge, and attitude to be safe and conscientious drivers. While extending the validity of the driver's license may lead to savings for the applicants, ensuring that only the competent drivers obtain such licenses should be the primary motivation in passing this bill into law. I therefore urge the members of this August body to therefore approve the Committee on Transportation's version of House Bill 5648, as it not only extends the validity of the driver's license, but ensures that only those who are worthy shall receive such a license. Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Sarmiento. Before we proceed, Majority Leader, can I have a motion requesting, uh, for the deletion of your motion in inserting his speech into the records?
Mister Speaker, I move that the speech of the Honorable Cesar Sarmiento be adapted as his sponsorship speech.
In lieu of his insertion.
In lieu of...
Of inserting his speech. There's a motion, no objection, the motion is carried. Let his sponsorship speech stand as it is delivered by the Honorable Sarmiento, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now open the period of interpolation and debate.
There's a motion. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, the Honorable Sarmiento, I move that we now terminate the period of interpolation and debate.
There's a motion, hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
There's a motion. No objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, there being no committee amendments as well as individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
There's a motion. No objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 5648. So move, Mister Speaker.
So move to voting. Those in favor of the bill say aye. Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider bills under the calendar of business for Thursday and Friday. Mister Speaker, pursuant to our rules, allow me to put forth an omnibus motion for the consideration of the following. House Bill 551, under Committee Report 199. House Bill 5552, under Committee Report 200. House Bill 5553, under Committee Report 201. House Bill 1865, under Committee Report 202. House Bill 2131, under Committee Report 203. House Bill 2132, under Committee Report 204. House Bill 5554, under Committee Report 205. House Bill 5562, under Committee Report 212. House Bill 5563, under Committee Report 213. House Bill 5564, under Committee Report 214. House Bill 3404, under Committee Report 215. House Bill 3526, under Committee Report 216. House Bill 5565, under Committee Report 217. House Bill 5566, under Committee Report 218. House Bill 5568, under Committee Report 219. House Bill 5585, under Committee Report 222. So move, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion for the omnibus approval on second reading of sixteen local bills. Hearing no objection. The aforementioned bills are deemed approved on second reading.
Mister Speaker, I move that we consider the respective explanatory notes as the sponsorship of the said measures.
No objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate on the said local bills, I move that we terminate the period of interpolation.
There being no objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments and approve the Committee on Amendments if any is contained in the respective Committee Reports of the aforementioned bills.
There's a motion, hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, there being no individual amendments, I move that we terminate the period of amendments.
There's a motion, hearing no objection, motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading on all the bills as enumerated by this resolution.
There's an omnibus motion for the voting of the sixteen aforementioned local bills. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor say nay. The ayes have it. Forementioned sixteen local bills are hereby approved on second reading. Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 3980, House Bill Number 1388, House Bill Number 191 and 3862, House Bill 2094, House Bill 1431, House Resolution Number 532, House Resolution Number 681, and the House Resolution Number 706. So move, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, allow me to read the titles of the following.
Please state clearly the motion, uh, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, allow me to repeat myself. Uh, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill Number 3980, from the Committee on Local Government to the Committee on Revision of Laws. House Bill Number 1388, from the Committee on Appropriations to the Committees on People's Participation and Appropriations. House Bill Number 191 and 3862, from the Committee on People's Participation to the Committees on People's Participation and Appropriations. House Bill Number 2094, from the Committee on Basic Education and Culture to the Committee on Social Services. House Bill Number 1431, from the Committee on Higher and Technical Education to the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Eligibility. House Resolution Number 532, from the Committee on Local Government to the Committee on Revision of Laws. House Resolution Number 681, from the Committee on Human Rights to the Committee on Agrarian Reform. And House Resolution Number 706, from the Committees on Higher Education, Higher and Technical Education and Transportation to the Committee on Higher and Technical Education. So move, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion for the change of referral for the aforementioned eight, uh, House Resolutions. Is there any objection? Chair H. N., the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move to suspend session for one minute.
One minute suspension. Session resumed, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, we are in receipt of the Bicameral Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of House Bill Number 4767 and Senate Bill Number 1365 on the Extension of the Validity of the Philippine Passport. Mister Speaker, in accordance with our rules, I move that we ratify the said bicameral conference committee report, so move, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion to ratify bicameral conference committee report. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, move for a one-minute suspension.
One-minute suspension.
correction?
Parang i-overwrite na 'yung geographic. Kaya nga, wala nga. So approve na lang ng journal, tapos adjourn? Hindi, ito mabait.
Session Nusum, Majority Leader.
Mister Speaker, I move for the election of the following. Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Marco Leta. Committee on Ecology, Koh Wanko. Economic Affairs, Billy Fuerte, Makapagal Arroyo. Foreign Affairs, Makapagal Arroyo. Government Enterprises and Privatization, Makapagal Arroyo. Higher Education, Adyong. Housing and Urban Development, Makapagal Arroyo. Interparliamentary Relations and Diplomacy, Escudero. Justice, Makapagal Arroyo. Labor and Employment, Makapagal Arroyo. National Defense and Security, Makapagal Arroyo. Population and Family Relations, Makapagal Arroyo. Revision of Loss, Makapagal Arroyo. Science and Technologies, Mirasol, Cagas, Sabelliano. And Sustainable Development Goals, Acosta Alba and Bravo.
There's a motion for the election of the aforementioned names. Hearing no objection, the motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Uh, Mister Speaker, I move that we recognize the guests of the Honorable Bernadette Herrera D. Of Bagoong Henerasyon Party List. Who are currently at the gallery.
The guests of the Honorable Herrera?
Herrera D, yes, and these are Arnell Tolentino, um, the team leader and company. So move, Mister Speaker.
Yes, your presence is hereby noted. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Minority Leader, uh Majority Leader.
Um, Mister Speaker. I move that we approve Journal Number Eighty-Nine. Dated May Fifteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. So move, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion to approve Journal Number Eighty-Nine, Monday, May Fifteen, Two Thousand Seventeen. No objection, the motion is carried.
Mister Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until tomorrow. May Seventeen at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Session adjourned. See you tomorrow classmates.